We have a drug.
Mics are hot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good so.
And I'll call this meeting to order if you will stand with me while we have our prayer and pledge.
Lord, thank this day. Thank for letting us be here. Nice day you provided us. Be with us now as we look at these options and things to be considered for Spalding County. Help us make the right decisions, do what's best for the community as a whole, and help us all to be better people for you and live a better life for you. Lord's name and pray, amen.
Thank you. You remain standing and say our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Just a little bit of reminders and instructions for the participants tonight. Just want to make sure that you understand, first of all, that we appreciate you being here and participating in the government of your county. And for whatever reason you're here tonight, we appreciate you being here. Speakers must sign up. If you're going to speak for any of the issues that are on the agenda tonight, you must sign at the back table and have your name registered as in relationship to any item that's before us. So if you have not had a chance to do that, is there anyone who wants to speak but has not had a chance to sign up? I think there's a gentleman back here. So for those of you who are going to be speaking, want to make sure that you direct your remarks to the board as a whole, not to any one particular member, or return or turn around and make a comment to the audience. Any personal disagreements for individual with individual board members or with county employees are not a matter of public concern, and personal attacks will not be tolerated. As Chair, I have the right to limit your comments of the interest of disposing of the county business in order to move the agenda forward. Speakers will be allowed three minutes to speak on their chosen topics for the pertinent information that you believe you would like to share with the members of the planning commission. No questions will be asked by the members of the board during the public hearings. Outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. Common courtesy and civility are expected at all times during these meetings. No members, no speakers will be permitted to speak more than three minutes or for more than once unless the board should choose to suspend that rule. I hope you understand and appreciate why we have to have regulations and rules for our meetings. So let's move to the agenda. First item.
Let me do it.
Yes, sir. I'm good. Application twenty-five dash fourteen S. In-house real estate LLC owner, two-five-four-seven Locust Grove Road, parcel two-zero-nine-zero-one-zero-three-eight-D, and twenty-five forty-five Locust Grove Road, parcel two-zero-nine-zero-one-zero-three-eight-C, located in land lot seventy-six of the second land district, consisting of approximately thirty-four point three combined acres. The applicant is requesting a special exception for a rural event center with associated short-term lodging options.
Mr. Allen, would you give us an introduction?
Yes, ma'am. This is a holdover from the August twenty-sixth meeting, which you first reviewed the item. One clarification, that is, the description of the whole thing is also a holdover from August twenty-sixth. So the really should stop at event center and the associated short-term lodging options, which you'll see on the revised site plan are no more at the back. We will discuss that in a few minutes. So just to clarify that. Also to clarify, even though we had a public hearing back on August twenty-sixth, I went ahead and re-advertise it for another one tonight since the site plan has changed pretty significantly. So that's the reason we're having another public hearing here, and we will hear from the applicant as well. The main changes, as I said, is the cabins and short-term lodging options at the back are gone, and the focus is now more on the event center in the front. There's a caretaker's residence, things like that. We'll get into those details a little bit later. But that's the main change is the kind of, I don't want to say controversial, but anyway, the main point of discussion from August twenty-sixth, the lodging options in the back are gone from the site plan. So we'll have another public hearing tonight.
Thank you. Do I have a motion from members of the board to open the public hearing?
So moved.
I have many motions. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second to open the public hearing. Is there an applicant to speak? Please come to the microphone and give us your name, your address, and the case you're speaking for.
Hey, good evening, board. Darryl Johnson, JDM Consultants, Atlanta, Georgia. And we have the owner, Dorothy Brown. She's right here next to me with in-town. In-house real estate.
So yes. Can we get your both addresses, please, sir? We need your address as well as the name.
Well, this is in regards to two-five-four-five and two-five-four-seven Locust Grove Road in Griffin. I'm the owner of those properties.
Are you, is that your residence?
My residence is three-zero-three Grand DeFlora Drive in McDonough, Georgia. Yes.
Okay.
So, so we're back presenting this. We, my client, she has thirty-four acre tract that she's looking to subdivide into three residential parcels along the front and an event center for the main tract, twenty-five acres. In doing so, we presented this to the board last time, and my client was looking to host this event center for special events. They've been listed here, the ones that she's looking to have. Those are weddings, corporate events, social events, nothing related to birthday parties or to such. No-kitty birthday parties would be allowed. There was some, in our discussions last time we came in, and if we could show the stroll down to the plan view of it. There were some discussions last time about the quarters and the residential lodging that we had in the rear area. What we've done is reintroduced a plan that essentially removes those from that back area. We do have an accessory structure in the back of quarters for the grounds, the groundskeeper and the venue owners for lodging. We also had numerous concerns about, if I can bring it up here for you on my phone. There were numerous concerns about shooting. There won't be any shooting going on at this venue. No guns or weapons on the site. Where are we going to be shooting? In terms of the maximum occupancy, we spoke with David about this, two-hundred is what we're looking to accommodate here. Hours of operation from ten a.m. to eleven p.m. The groundskeeper is going to keep the grounds pristine. We are looking at providing some vegetated, a well-vegetated planted area along the entranceway coming into the site. There was even some measures or some concern about the floodplain area. We're now showing that on the plans. The floodplain sort of stops at the lake area, and it continues down the stream going through the site. We just wanted to make sure that we try to address all of those concerns that were coming up before, and we did a lot to try to revise this so that we could make it more tolerable for the neighbors. In terms of parking, I know that it's a lot of, this could bring some attraction to to the general crowd. We are hosting events here, and it could, again, it could bring a good bit of people. With that said, our parking, we would look to have some spillover parking on site to accommodate them, and it'd be outside of the stream buffer areas. We also are looking at some shuttle service if we need to, from, there are some. To and from the venue, from the hotels that's in the area. So we want to make sure that you guys don't have any other questions for us before we leave the stage here. Anything? Chair, Madam Chair.
There'll be a time for the.
Okay, so we could.
Go ahead.
So if there are questions or concerns, will we have an opportunity to come back up and speak on those? We will invite you back to the microphone if there are any questions from the members of the board. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Are there other speakers?
Yes, ma'am, there are. Day or Di Ellis.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Ms. Ellis, would you lean more closely to the microphone, please?
Ms. Ellis, we need your name and address.
Di Ellis. I live two-six-seven zero Locust Grove Road. I live across the street from where this will be, could be built. First, I'd like to say, bringing a business into a neighborhood, I'm sure it has well intentions when they first arrive. But as time goes on, the possibility of it deteriorating, causing deterioration to our community could happen. And it's something that nobody wants, but it could happen. Our family has owned property in this area for over seventy years. We live across the street from where the proposed event center could be developed. Some of this I said at the previous meeting, but I want to reiterate it along with other points because we do not want the event center in our neighborhood. We live in a rural area, and for the most part, it is quiet and peaceful. Within the last year, we have had several properties to sell. Each neighbor came here after making an informed decision to purchase the property because of the zoning designation. Can you imagine moving to your new home only to find that just starting to enjoy the peace and quiet of it, and now you have an event center that they hold events every weekend in your neighborhood? And you are going to hear whatever is going on. There are nine registered event centers and twelve park pavilions available for citizens to rent at a very low cost, putting the revenue back into our community. There are also two events that are less than seven miles from our community on the end that we live in Locust Grove. We live in an open area that echoes. When there is an event near our home, we hear it. So when people practice shooting their guns at five-fifty Amelia Road, we hear it. When the church located at thirty-eight fifty-five Jackson Road has parking lot services, we hear it. When our neighbors at sixteen fifty North Walker Mill Road have a celebration, we hear it. The noise is not our only concern. The paperwork submitted states the property does not meet the setback requirement. It also states you plan on building tiny houses. How many will you build? The paperwork says the majority of the events will be held, I'm sorry. The majority of the events that will be held will be weddings and corporate events. Having said that, we know liquor will be served. Will there be a need for security? Will events also be held outside? What is the vetting process for someone renting the event center? We are concerned because you cannot guarantee no guns or bad element will not enter our neighborhood. Our road just got repaved. The intersection at Locust Grove Road and Jackson Road is now a three-way stop. We are adjusting to the flow traffic for us, and we don't know what added congestion will be created if the event center were built. Allowing the event center to come to our community opens the door to unwanted elements entering our neighborhood. For those reasons, we feel we will lose our serenity if the event center is built, and we humbly ask the board to reject the request for a special exemption to change the property usage at two-five-four-five and two-five-four-seven Locust Grove Road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Could, excuse me, could I ask for staff, is there remaining time for the?
Forty speakers have fifteen minutes, and opposition has also fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes left. Thank you. Go ahead.
Ann Dawson.
I'm sorry.
Ann Dawson, two-six-five-six Locust Grove Road. I am in complete unity with what my fellow neighbor has stated. Though we are in a rural setting, we are very, very close to it, and we are so proud, and we take pride in our community, and we don't want this at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Duffy.
Good afternoon. Linda Duffy, eight-twenty East Layton Avenue. We called it the ranch, and we have had a lot of family function out there. And I think it would be good because since it's been gone, it's like our family just done. We never made no lot of noise. Police never had to come out there, none of that. And to me, when it was lost, well, sold, it tore us apart as my family and my cousin them. I would really love to see something back there again, so we can do family reunions again, so we can just come together as a family again. Thank you.
Joe Velasenor.
Good afternoon. I'm Joe Velasenor, twenty-three eighty-seven Locust Grove Road. It's pretty obvious that, you know, progress is a wonderful thing. I've noticed since we live really close to Henry County, the overwhelming development that's taken place a few miles away from us on Locust Grove Road. It's just that fifteen, twenty years ago, when we purchased this home of ours, it was peaceful, tranquility, and that's why we moved there. We wanted to keep that setting for our kids, for our grandkids, but it's pretty obvious that we're losing, we're losing that detail of life. And even though I do a lot of construction, I moved from the big city to rural Griffin in order to maintain that peace and tranquility. So I'm definitely opposing this project. Thank you.
Jean. No last name? Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, that's all that signed up.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Two minutes, second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, there is none. Mr. Allen, would you present your staff report?
Yes, ma'am. So as I said before, the main, we sat down after the August twenty-sixth meeting with Mr. Johnson and Ms. Brown to go over the site, potential site plan changes. We talked about a lot of different issues. They agreed to have the event center itself as the emphasis here and to, you know, not emphasize the, all the lodging options at the back, just to go move forward, hopefully with the events center itself. We also discussed other options, like if a bride or groom wanted to, if they are from another state or something, living out that way, or not living close by, that they could possibly spend the night. Of course, mentioned the three house lots they would have at the front. So it's like, well, if you're all going to retain ownership of one of those, have bride or groom, whoever, spend the night at the house there, just go back over to the place in the morning, get ready for the wedding or whatever. So we had decided on that, since they're going to have some houses there in front anyway. As she mentioned, and the revised staff reports mentioned, there would be a caretaker living there full-time. She also mentioned some things about an occasional business partner coming in and staying at the same house. But it's one house, and it would have to come up to the standards of AR1 zoning, the size. It would not be like a tiny house or anything like that. There's still some amenities there. There's the Red Barn, the other, the gazebo, the other larger venue, an amenity annex there with some sauna, hot tub for the wedding guest, or whatever the corporate retreat might be. She indicated, indicate to me she wanted this to be more high-end events, as she just said. Not so much pony rides, birthday parties, fireworks, that kind of stuff, but more bread and butter would be the weddings, the majority of it, and then some corporate retreats, things of that nature, some possible adult birthday parties. But getting away from church festivals and kid events and things like that, more of the high-end type of events. So that is, was her desire she conveyed to me. So you had the revised site plan before you. Those were revised conditions, of course. One of the things that's going to have to be dealt with, and we didn't have enough time to do it for this meeting for the Board of Appeals in October, is the possible variance in the back. If you look in your rural event center standards, it's a two-hundred-foot setback from all property lines to give more of a buffer than like a large residential area or something as far as noise and activity and stuff to give existing residences the proper amount of space and privacy. If you can see from the site plan, if you go back to that for a minute, they are proposing a hundred-foot buffer along the perimeters of property lines instead of a two-hundred. And you can see there from the blue dash lines at the bottom and the kind of gray or blue hatched area there, that is stream, stream buffer and floodplain plus that pond. If you did a two-hundred-foot buffer there, basically the back half or more of the property is unbuildable in terms of an event center. You must totally squeeze it out. I'm not certain you could even build in the front if you took the two-hundred-foot setback all the way to those lines and go to Locust Grove Road. It would pretty much squeeze every building out. So if the use is recommended for approval, obviously if it's not, and it's not approved, then the variance is a moot point. But however, if it does move forward to be approved, that variance would have to be approved as well, or else it's basically non-buildable for an event center, so.
Thank you. Mistress, do any of you have any comments or discussion for this application?
I'm looking at where the proposed events pavilion is. Well, I can't tell what is the building and maybe what's an outdoor area. I see the heavy black outline. Is that the building shape?
Yes.
Okay, so to the, to the upside of that, would that be for outside?
Excuse me, if you're going to be addressing the applicant, and you need to speak, come to the microphone, please, to respond.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes, thank you. I was concerned with, with that events pavilion that's labeled there. Yes, thank you. I, I was concerned with, with that, uh, events pavilion that's labeled there. So would all the events be inside?
Yes, yes, Stephen.
I'm sorry, can I speak? So the answer is yes, majority of the events will be held inside. No events will be held in the front of the pavilion center. If events are held outside at the pavilion center, there's a, there'll be a, there's a patio on the rear side of the center itself.
Towards the lake.
Yes, that's correct.
Well, the only thing I'm worried about is that big open area, and I know sound's going to travel really far over that lake area. Could, could all that be reoriented more towards the, what, west side of the property to? Cause I'm worried about the sound transferring so far over that lake. And could any outside stuff be directed more back towards the, um, excuse me, eastern side of the property or back where the stream goes?
You mean, the, the plan is right. We could, it, it's not set in stone. We could angle or orient some buildings if, if needed to, to provide more of a, uh, soundproofing, we can.
Just hearing the concerns of the speakers, several speakers, they're worried about the noise. If it's bad now, what would it be like with outdoor guests?
So we, so we, 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 we have spoken with the builder, um, in terms of using the proper building materials and things to that such, to make sure that we, uh, we keep the sound barriers inside. We got some materials in place that we think will be very, very helpful for this exercise. But we were more than willing to angle a building, uh, more to the southeast if we need to, towards that stream buffer to kind of, um, push that sound back to that rear area of the lot.
Uh, just looking at this, it looks like there's a lot of vegetation back there to the southeast and to the east that could really help with that. Um, other question while you're up there, over towards the end of the property, that accessory dwelling quarters, there at the end of that road, what's the proposed intent of that?
Uh, number one, it will be for additional restrooms, so if there are guests out on the venue itself moving about, they won't have to come back to the pavilion center to use the restroom. Then secondly, uh, laundry area for, for the, uh, event center. Um, also proposing sauna and/or a steam room area.
But it's labeled as dwelling quarters.
That's the caretaker.
Which one are you speaking of? I apologize.
The end, the, the furthest east.
Oh, the quarters?
Okay.
Yeah, so that's a single, single-family dwelling for the caretaker. For our caretaker and as I mentioned in our meeting with Mr. Allen, uh, it will be also utilized occasionally by the owner, the venue owners and partners.
So that wouldn't be rented out then or anything like that?
No, that would not be rented out, no.
Um, Ms. Brown, when we had spoke, were you, when we spoke about the bride and groom, whoever possibly spending the night, that was on lot three, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then I know south of there, we can't see it, but as Mr. Bryant was speaking about southeast of there, it's a pretty, very large property, I think with one house, like right in the middle?
Yes, my neighbor who I've known, I've spoken to several times is A-OK.
So lot three would be a tied-in with the event center in terms of?
Yes, that's what we're proposing, yes.
I guess last question, had, had you spoken with any of the neighbor groups prior to this? I mean, to, to get their, their feel for it. I mean, we've heard from some tonight.
Yes, yes, I have. The, the few who are immediate to the parcel, definitely, I have, yes.
Sorry, just.
Yeah, so I actually, I've actually spoken to several and, um, I was encouraging them to sign a sheet, but they did want to come speak. And actually one just had an accident, which is the neighbor right next to us, the, the single-family dwelling. Uh, just had, uh, an accident, so he could not make it. And then, um, I've spoken, just briefly, to one of my neighbors across the street and then a, a second one to the right, which is directly in front of the parcel as well.
Then one last clarification, all the existing structures on that property, they're going to be what?
Yeah, we, we, we're, we're going to demolish all of those.
So you're not going to try to reuse any?
No, 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 they'll be, they'll be demolished.
Okay, right. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions for the applicant?
I've got a comment. You're trying to move into a neighborhood where you're not wanted. I'd have a hard time supporting you and throwing the people who have come here to live in a peaceful environment under the bus.
May I reply to your comment?
Sure.
I don't think it's me that's not wanted. I would hope it's not me personally that's not wanted. The property causes for a residential structured dwelling, which we are proposing in addition to the event center. And we have, we, we have definitely heard everything that was presented here by, by the neighbors. So that's why we, we came in with what we think are solutions to those concerns.
Does anybody that spoke against this think that's a solution?
To think what is the solution and to what, what the problem is. Their problem, I heard, was the concern about noise and traffic.
I think that's a valid concern.
And our response to that was we have sufficient parking. We'll also, uh, encourage carpooling, shuttle service to and from hotels, hoping to bring business to the community if they, um, if our guests utilize the hotels in the surrounding area. In regards to, I'm sorry, did you want to add?
Yeah, 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 so, Mr. Frank, um, we, we understand we're neighbors ourselves somewhere, right? And we're not trying to cause any problems for the neighbors in the future. We think this is, this may even add some value to what they have now. But we're, we're, we have done our due diligence as much as possible to come up with something that we think would be fitting for the area.
It's like it's the wrong, it's the wrong activity for that area.
And, and, and it's respected. I respect your opinion and that, I, but.
It doesn't sound like you do.
I'm, I'm good.
We appreciate it. Any other commissioners that like to make a comment? Please stay at the podium.
Well, I, I'll make a comment. I, I mean, I think, uh, you know, with the areas out there, I, I certainly appreciate. I, I love rural areas and stuff myself and, um, and so I can appreciate the fact that we have some people in here that are concerned about it. Um, however, I will also say that, um, you know, I can also appreciate the fact that you all have took note of what was talked about the last time you were here, and this was tabled and tried to make concessions and tried to make efforts to make improvements. Um, you're also, uh, demolishing a lot of buildings that are, that I saw out there currently. Um, and are, and, you know, are improving the site dramatically with what you're trying to do. So, um, I can, can appreciate that. Um, also the fact with the, uh, two-hundred foot, again, where you had the pavilion itself, you, you are basically two-hundred foot away from everything. So it looked like you were also making an effort with that regard as well. So I mean, I, I think y'all have made some big headway and are making good progress with this and, um, so we can go with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make just one last comment? I know people are probably imagining their aunts or their uncles or cousins or someone having a party in the backyard or barbecue in the backyard. That is not what we're proposing. It's just not. There, there's going to be a lot of dollars placed into this project. Hopefully a lot of dollars coming into the county, uh, from this project. So I, I can't say high-end enough, quality enough. We will have security at every event. There will be security there, not just sitting in the car. We, we will actually have them walking the lots, walking the, the, the parking lot as well. So we're, we're definitely.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your additional comments. Do I have a motion from members of the board regarding this application?
I would move to deny.
You have a motion to deny? Do we have a second to that motion? Hearing no second, the motion to deny dies on the floor. Any other motion to be?
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendation of the, um, conditional recommendation from the staff.
We have a motion to approve with conditions, uh, for staff's recommendations. Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll, I'll second.
I have a second for the motion. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? We have one opposition. The motion carries. Next item.
Thank you. One second. Um, so obviously the next stage of, well, commissioners have to actually approve it. And that'll be on, I believe I have it advertised for October twenty-third. The variance is a separate issue, but.
The variance has to come back here. And then it needs to go up to BOC all in one package.
Right. So that will likely occur with it being all in one package in, uh, probably late November. Because as he said, we need to, at one point implying for the variance that this did not get approved, it'd be a moot point. We also didn't have the advertising time anyway, so that's why it was not along with this. Cause by the time we talked about the revised site plan, it was too late to fully advertise it as we have, have to legally do. So, uh, I will get with y'all on the timing of the variance and everything and getting it all together to come back to this board for the setback variance. And then everything, variance plus special exception for the, uh, use itself in November for the commissioners, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, board.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda.
Yes, Madam Chair. Application twenty-five dash twenty-five Z, seven fifteen West. I'm at WW Hall LLC, owner four, Sixth Street, parcel number one-two-three. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed one. My apologies. Got ahead of myself. Application twenty-five dash fifteen S, Brightmore Land Holdings LLC, owner thirty-two twenty-three Noonan Road, parcel number two-six-eight zero-one-zero-zero-six, located in Land Lot Fifteen of the second land district consisting of approximately a hundred and one point nine-nine acres. The applicant is requesting a special exception for an in-house daycare for children for employees.
Mr. Allen, will you give us an introduction, please?
Yes, ma'am. So Brightmore is we're all familiar with for many years in the same place. Quite a bit of nursing staff and medical staff there. Uh, there is, we were approached with a need to have a in-house or in-facility daycare for the nursing and other medical staff that might have little children that want to have a daycare facility for them there, right where they're working. Uh, so they're trying to, if approved, would utilize an existing building in the back to have that daycare. Also approved, obviously would have to go through all state and fire marshal and various requirements to make it a appropriate daycare. Uh, so it's a little bit of a unique request. Never quite had this before, but yes, that's the request to have a, an in-house, in-facility daycare just for the staff of Brightmore Hospice. It would not be open to the general public.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'm moved.
Have a motion to, and a second to open the public hearing. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, there is no opposition. Do we have an applicant to representing? Please step to the microphone and give us your information.
Thank you. I'm Chuck Brown. I'm one of the owners and, um, I'm the administrator for hospice. My, I live at one-seventy Wingate Circle in Fayetteville. Uh, the, the address for the, um, proposed daycare is thirty-two twenty-three Noonan Road. And it's in the, um, old, used to be the nursing home in nineteen sixty-five. And they built the new nursing home in two thousand and four. And so they, it's now a senior living, assisted living building. And they've had, um, an area down at the end and they started the hospice company in that areas and used it as an office. It's been storage, it's been maintenance, it's about twenty-five hundred square feet. And so, uh, as we've grown, uh, we, we now have over six hundred employees. And so as we've grown, you know, we, we, we're trying to do things to, to make things better for our employees. And so lots and lots of them have kids and, uh, so we want to start with daycare, kind of limited, full-time daycare and then, uh, some drop-off after school. And like I say, it's at, at the end of the assisted living, kind of in between the nursing home and the old, old nursing home. And Mr. Allen pretty much covered everything.
Even the drop-off after school would just be for the employees' kids, right?
Correct, correct. And we, it won't be buses or anything like that. Unless it, we talked the other day, it came to us, we could probably have some of them ride the school bus out there, but yeah, it'll, it'll just be for employees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other speakers?
No, Madam Chair. No one else has signed up for this item.
Do I have a motion from members of the board to close the public hearing?
I'm moved.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, there is no opposition. The comments from members of the board?
Well, I'd, I'd just like clarification of what building it is. Cause when I drove out there, I was a little confused.
Madam Chair, how about the staff report?
Yes.
So sorry. Sorry, David. Do we have a staff report?
Mr. Bryant's question, correct me if I'm wrong, is to the rear of the main building at the back, right? So you would not be able to see it from the rows.
So it's, it's not the one that has the place structures out in front of it now?
That is it, yes. It's the back building at the end, end of that.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, as I said, with this being for, uh, limited scope for employees only, I don't see any harm in it. It would be a great benefit to the employees. I did have, uh, four approval conditions, uh, must confirm that all rules from Georgia Department of Human Resources are being complied with. That's state requirements for daycares. Two, all necessary building permits should be obtained and pass all building officials, fire marshal inspections, just standard stuff there. Service shall be restricted to employees only for children whose parent or primary caretaker is employed by Brightmore, not open to the general public. I trust y'all, but you never know about the future, so we put it as approval condition. And then number four, it shall remain an accessory to the existing principal use on the property, which is hospice and medical care. So in other words, it won't become a large super daycare one day, you know, just accessory to what's out there now, so.
Thank you. Discussion by the members of the board?
Well, I just, I just wanted to say that, uh, I think it's a great employee benefit, have a place for children. Wish a lot of companies did that, cause I, the childcare is, um, rather difficult. And I do have a little bit of background in the daycare center due to my wife at church. And I would encourage y'all to look at, uh, the decal. Cause, uh, right from the start, I think it was going to be the government, government. And just a question, are y'all going to try to be open from what, what hours to what hours? And sorry, I guess.
If you would, if you would come to the microphone, please, and give your name and address and then respond, please.
My name's Ashley Donovan. I live at ten fifty-four Teeman Road in Griffin. Um, the hours right now are from six-thirty to seven PM, just because a lot of the nurses work seven to seven.
Sure, sure.
So it'll be those hours for now.
And, uh, do you, uh, are you going to have like food service there, I guess, for lunches or?
Yeah, so with, um, with assistant living being right there, the assistant living already has a chef that provides the food. And with nursing homes and the daycare, they're pretty much on the same food plan. So they would just fix the food and bring us, I'll call in, tell them how many we have for the day and they would just bring it down to us.
Oh, sounds like you're doing your homework, but just look at the, uh, bright from the start website.
I've studied it. I've called and talked to them and asked questions. I have, sir.
Good, good. It's, it's an extensive process.
Oh, yes, it is.
Thank you.
Yeah, anything else?
Any other comments or questions for the applicant from members of the board? Hearing none, we thank you very much. Do we have a, uh, a motion?
I recommend approval for, uh, twenty-five dash fifteen S with the listed conditions by staff.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion to approve with the conditions of staff with a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Having none, the motion does pass. Next item?
Now. Now, to this one. Application twenty-five dash twenty-five Z seven fifteen W W Hall LLC owner four Sixth Street parcel number one, two, three, one, one, zero, zero, one. Located in land lot two oh seven of the second land district consisting of approximately nine point six six acres. County initiated rezoning to restore Mill Village District overlay designation and associated standards unto the subject property per section four fourteen.
Mr. Allen, if you'd give us an introduction.
So this was, this development we're going to hear about was approved back in May of two thousand and twenty-three before my time for the property for a tire retreading business for Mr. Lucas, who we may hear from in a few minutes. It was in the Mill Village overlay at the time, was this a primarily a residential renovation district that was approved several years back by the Board of Commissioners? And approving Mr. Lucas's plan for the warehouse buildings and all that on the area and the tire retreading and just tire sale business, they agreed to drop the Mill Village District overlay designation on the property there. Since I came here in August of two thousand and twenty-four, I've been visiting the site, working with Mr. Lucas in the past for some tire cleanup. He gotten some health problems. We kind of changed the scope of the project. There's like four buildings out there, maybe three. He had, onsite meeting we had had, he had wanted to reduce the scope of the, what was originally approved, focus on the one building for tire retreading. He had his machine in there. We were going to have some inspections, have a sprinkler system and all that. Since that time, he has fallen into a more severe health situation. I've communicated with his daughter about the situation. He appears to be unable to do it anymore himself. I understand he will have tonight prospective builders here that would like to carry on the activity he was approved for. However, and Dr. Ledbetter's not here, but Deputy County Manager Ms. Di here can confirm that even though this is before my time, the commission, the Board of Commissioners, the ruling body, it was their desire that should the approval Mr. Lucas got for his business there that he was going to develop, fall through and not come to pass, that they wanted the Mill Village overlay district designation put back on the property. If that is so, then it will be mostly permitted uses as residential. You cannot do any big industrial type uses or commercial uses on there. It's primarily residential. So this is where this is coming from. This is why this is county initiated. And Ms. Di can confirm this for me. It was their desire that it go back to Mill Village overlay.
Yes, Mr. Allen is correct. That is the Board of Commissioners consensus overall to go back to the Mill Village overlay for this particular property.
Thank you. Do I have a motion from the members of the board to open the public hearing?
Opened.
Have a motion, have a second to open public hearing. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, there is no opposition. The public hearing is now open. We'll hear from the applicant. You have up to twenty minutes to speak, to make presentation. Please give us your name, address, and tell us what you want to say.
My name is Mike Kendall. My address is one thirty North...
Please speak directly in the microphone, I'm sorry.
Excuse me. My name is Mike Kendall, K E N D A L L. And my address is one three zero North Hill Street, Griffin. I'd like to say good afternoon, good evening to everyone. Mr. Lucas asked me to come down here on his behalf this evening. I, I helped Mr. Lucas three years ago when this issue first came up. But I haven't been representing him since then. I wasn't, I wasn't representing him when, in back in two thousand and twenty-three when the, when the board agreed to the, the development under those special conditions. And I haven't really been involved in this until a couple of days ago. So I want to apologize because I'm not completely up to speed as to everything that has transpired since I got out of this in two thousand and twenty-two. So after speaking to Mr. Lucas and speaking very briefly with your staff yesterday, Mr. Lucas has been, has had some severe health issues here this year on this, on this, which has affected his ability to some extent to try to bring this development into fruition. As you know, this is one of Dundee Mills' old abandoned meal sites. And it, when I first started working with him three years ago, trying to figure out something to do with this, the board hadn't taken it out of the overlay district at the time. So it was really a lot of, wasn't much he could do with it. And as I said, I wasn't involved when he got, the board decided to take it out of the overlay district, to give him opportunity to try to develop this. So from what I'm talking to him yesterday and trying to figure out, reading some of the minutes, reading some of the, the correspondences that his daughter sent to me this morning. I'm a little confused as to exactly what has taken place here in these last three years. But it seems that Mr. Lucas was, was tasked with installing a sprinkler system out there in one of these buildings. And from looking at these receipts, these notes and these emails and some of his receipts, apparently he spent a considerable amount of money with Patriot Fire Protection to try to install this sprinkler system out there in, in one of these buildings. And he, of course, now, as you can see, he's somewhat regained his ability at least to come out and participate in this project. And he really just asked me to come down here to see if there was some, some way that he could be granted a little more time to try to bring this project out of the ground. He has some other individuals here that have agreed to and he has been in touch with to try to help him bring this thing to fruition. So I'm not here to try to explain away whatever's been going on for the last two years since two thousand and twenty-three and board, because I really don't know and I haven't had time to really get up to speed completely on everything that has happened and why this project hadn't been prosecuted any further than it is. But I do know, miss, for the past six or seven months, Mr. Mr. Lucas has, has had a series of strokes that has prevented him physically from participating fully. And so that's sort of where I am. He asked me to come down here, try to help him out. He's still, he's still somewhat physically limited in what he can do. And I try to, try to make sure he doesn't get too overextended down here today and have a further relapse in his medical condition so that, because the project sort of needs him to, to, to kind of shepherd this thing through. But I told him that I would be more than happy to try to help him, whatever I could do for him to try to see that this job gets done if the board is willing to give him some other time. So all this money that he has spent, because before I even got in it, in two thousand and twenty-two, he had, he had spent a considerable amount of money on this project, just even buying this piece of property before he came down here and really knew all of the, all of the operative details of what he needed to get in order to try to operate this business. And sort of kind of got, you know, the horse in front of the cart a little bit on this thing. But that's sort of where he is this evening.
Thank you. Is, is there time left for the applicant to speak? Fourteen minutes.
Fourteen minutes.
I, I have here receipts for...
Mr. Lucas, we need your name and address, please, sir.
Marshall Lucas, three zero nine Mangum Road, Griffin, Georgia. Uh, I have here receipts for four hundred and three thousand dollars where I tried to bring this, this business up. Uh, it's, it's, it's not a retreading, no retreading. Uh, it was just, uh, uh, buying and selling tires, but no, no retreading. Although I do have a chamber in there, but that's where we fixed the tires. And, and, uh, I've spent, I mean, for four hundred and three thousand dollars, it, it kind of put me in bad shape. And I thank Mr. and, uh, I, uh, had, uh, three strokes in it since, since March. I have not been on the property since March. I couldn't, I couldn't. I had to sleep in a, a dog room at home. And if you put this, if you put this back in the overlay, I will lose, you know, my four hundred and three thousand plus what I paid for it, plus all that. All I'm doing is asking for, for, for you to give me a chance to finish what I started. I mean, if you want to, if you want to view these receipts, I got them right here, for four hundred and three thousand dollars. So I was trying to do what you want me to do. And I, and I will tell you now, I will finish, uh, this project if you give me a chance. But when you laying up in the bed, you can't do it. Mr. Randall is, is coming in to help me, uh, finish this project. And I don't think it's right.
Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate it. Another, next speaker?
Uh, my name's Randall Kane. I live at eight twenty-five Streamside Drive, McDonough, three oh two five two. Uh, my business is Kane's Truck and Trailer Repair, one hundred Industrial Boulevard, McDonough. Mr. Marshall, I've known his business for a long time. I've been doing this for thirty years and I've seen his trailers all over Atlanta, a bunch of different companies. He's not going anywhere, he's going to stay in business. Uh, I got to know him about a year ago. I, he started bringing his equipment for me to work on, that's how we met. After that, about two months ago, he got sick. About two months ago, he approached me and he didn't help, so I came to help him. Six months ago? Six months ago. About two months ago, I got fully invested with him. About the last two months, we've been spending a lot of time together. I've promised him I would help him in a way I can to build this back up, make this happen. All I, we really ask for is eight months to a year. It's been three years, just give him another eight months to a year. I'll have the sprinkler systems in there and we'll, we'll get it going as, and as he's wanting done. But that's our game plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Is there time left?
Ten minutes.
Okay.
The, these old abandoned properties that Dundee left us with around, all around the county are, are really, um, I'm not really, I don't have the correct word to try to, to try to describe it. How we somehow allowed them to leave all of these properties that went up there on Experiment Street. I sent Mr. Ledbetter a letter a few weeks ago because they have turned it, both sides of the street into a complete dump. And I mean, because I live in that particular school district and that particular county commission district, it is really, really incumbent upon us to do, try to do something about these things. Now, just as a, a matter of, I, I don't know what you might call it, but this overlay district, that this property that the county somewhere wanted to put it in, I'm not sure really what benefit anybody in Spalding County gets from these old abandoned meal projects, properties being in a residential district. Now, maybe somebody can explain it. And this, this is my own personal opinion about this, from being a lifelong resident of Spalding County. But what benefit is anybody in Spalding County going to get with these old abandoned meal sites being zone residential? Now, I have no idea who might come along, out here, this piece of property, out here on Park and decide that they want to demolish all of this stuff and build some residential property on this particular piece of property. It kind of sort of, to my mind, makes absolutely no sense. Now, maybe obviously somebody has some better insight on this than I have and why they did it, I don't know. But as a practical matter, that piece of property being in a meal village overlay district, I, I just don't see what kind of developmental sense that makes. I know Mr. 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 Lucas been trying to prosecute this job for quite some time. And maybe people down here have gotten a little, been out of shape with him because it hadn't happened fast enough. But I can pretty much assure you, nothing is going to happen to that piece of property out there in none of our lifetimes if it's zone residential. So I would hope that you and the commissioners would think twice about exactly, even though he hasn't done maybe what you think he should have done fast enough, putting it back into some residential zoning classification. You're just going to condemn everybody out there and the whole community in all of Spalding County that thinks sitting there to, to, uh, the world, to Allah, Jesus, Buddha, somebody come back. Because nobody's going to develop that piece of property into some kind of residential. Because I've been out there three years ago and I don't see any possibility of that happening. So why you want to put it back in a meal village overlay district makes no sense to me. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much for your time and your comments. Any more speakers?
Yes, Madam Chair. The address is two forty-five Cotton Mill Court. I don't know if it's, I didn't want to mispronounce your name, I'm sorry.
Stefan Paulhus, two four five Cotton Mill Court, Fayetteville, Georgia. And I'm also owner of one of the Mill Villages in the Mill Village Overlay at five Witten Avenue. So I'd like to start out by, the state law three six dash six six dash one provides the minimum requirements for a county in order to do a zoning change. Two things need to happen, a public hearing and advertisement, of which were done. Because I did two FOIA requests, one on seven seven twenty-five and one on eight four twenty-five. I've got those request numbers if you need them. There were four pieces of information that were provided. A resolution, amending, an overlay map, not signed and sealed, a text amendment. And if you read Article twenty-three of the Spalding County Code, section twenty-three oh two, it says, "Any amendment involving a change of a zoning district must be entered on the official map as soon as the amendment has been approved by the Board of Commissioners." Which this was approved back in four of, the, the planning commission saw it three of twenty-one. The first reading was four of twenty-one, the second reading was five of twenty-one. The entry must be as follows. On this date, by official action of the Board of Commissioners of Spalding County, the following changes were made in the official zoning map. Spalding County, Georgia, brief description of the change. It must be signed by the commission chairman. No amendments to portions of this ordinance that are illustrated on the official map become effective, the word effective, until after the change has been entered as described above. Until after the change has been entered as described above on the official map. Alterations to the official map may be made only by the procedures contained in sections four one four or two three oh two of this ordinance. Any unauthorized alter, alteration of the official map made by any person is a violation of this ordinance. So then I ask, why are we here? If we, I just went up to David's office planning and zoning. They have a big map on the wall. I took photos of it today. It's signed and sealed by the Commission on twenty twenty-one. And if you read Article twenty-three, it gives you a complete list of every map change up until twenty twenty-one. Since then, nothing. Therefore, why are we here? If, if the Commission hasn't done what they were supposed to do, how are they holding his feet to the fire to go back into an overlay that was never effectuated? So. So. Let me go back to my notes here. Alright. So Article twenty-three is where I base for my property too, which I have the same problems. David and I have been talking since April of this year. And I, I mean, Newton's been on the emails and I've contended that this hasn't been valid for six months now. And everybody, including the Commissioner, one of the Commissioners has told me it's done properly. If it was done properly, how come it's not in Article twenty-three? And how come there's not a published map anywhere? Not on Q Public, nowhere else that's available to the public. So if it's not made available to the public, how do we as the public know what somebody did? When I did my FOIA, there is no map in the FOIA. There was no map ever issued with the original agenda. If these can be provided, I don't know why they haven't been provided to my lawyer or to myself previously. So I just don't understand why we're even here. Road improvements, the per, whole purpose of the Mill Village Overlay, if you actually, if you actually read the overlay, it is to protect and preserve the elements. No road improvements have been done that I've been able to find since this. There's abandoned houses. There's abandoned lots. There's trash sitting on the side of the road. What's the purpose of writing an overlay to preserve and protect an area if we're not going to do anything about it? So my property in the past five years have allowed forty thousand cubic yards of junk. Forty thousand. No one said anything. I was before you guys here a couple of months ago and you rejected what I want to do. But, I mean, it, my lawyer just happened not to bring this up. So if you're revitalizing the neighborhood, where's the revitalization? It's been years. And, and why hasn't there been a published map for somebody buying a piece of property? Look, I met Miss, Mr. Lucas here a couple of months back when I read, started reading documentation. I'm offering my services as, you know, an electrical contractor and I'm applying for my general contractor for the state of Georgia to help him in his endeavor. And I would hope that you guys would give him time to do what he needs to do because of his illness. So with that, that's it. And I, by the way, I did ask for an updated map today and I did receive it and there is no overlay. And there's no signatures, no signing and sealing. So, again, why are we here if the, if nothing was followed properly? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other speakers?
Yes, ma'am. Carl Sowerberry? No?
They must do.
That's all that's signed up for this item.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing? I have a motion to close the public hearing with a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Mr. Allen, would you present your staff report, please?
Uh, my staff report, the recommendation was to, uh, return it back to Mill Village Overlay based on conversations I'd had with Mr. Lucas's daughter and his intent to try to sell the property. That was back in mid-August. I'd be happy to read that to you if you'd like, uh, but that was also per the Fire Marshal as well, who's been talking with him. He's not aware of any plan to resume it or anything of that nature. That was the last correspondence I had had as of mid-August that it was, he is in very bad health, cannot continue and is going to be sold to somebody else. I reminded his daughter of what the Commissioner's intent was. Before there's any new prospective buyer, we gotta see if it's gonna go back to Mill Village first. And please convey that to every single prospective buyer after Mr. Lucas that this is not necessarily a done deal until the boards have their say. So she said she would do that. Here we are now. Uh, nothing further from that. I understand Mr. Galloway may have some other history on the, the property.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a, make a couple of comments on this.
Thank you.
Mr. Paulhus's property is completely differently situated because his property is within the Mill Village Overlay and Mr. Lucas's property is not. So the argument regarding the validity or invalidity of the Mill Village Overlay to Mr. Lucas's property is irrelevant. We worked with Mr. Lucas's daughter several years ago and the county agreed to remove the property from the Mill Village Overlay. What had happened, and Mr. Kendall can confirm this, is the property had been bought. The assumption was it would be, be able to be used industrially. Mr. Lucas then learned the Mill Village, about the Mill Village Overlay, which is intended to encourage redevelopment of the Mill House, Mill House Villages in Griffin in order to use them as incentive to provide reasonable, affordable housing for folks who were willing to go in and redevelop. And of course, that has not occurred so much because almost all of them are rentals. And our lovely Spalding County slum lords tend not to have the desire to release ownership. But I would also point out that the Bolton Parkway Overlay was adopted in nineteen ninety-eight and we saw no development until twenty twenty-three. Now, and I might add, the incentive for that was based upon redevelopment that had occurred in and around the Fulton Bag Cotton Mill in Cabbage Town. Now, but again, the validity or invalidity of the Mill Village Overlay is irrelevant to most of Lucas's property. But he got, he buys the property. It's, he finds out it's under the Mill Village Overlay. He cannot do what he wants to do. And as a result, Michael, I think you can remember, we had several citations issued and they were heard in magistrate court as to the use being in violation of the zoning ordinance at that time. Now, ultimately, the county agreed with the positions that Mr. Kendall just enunciated from the podium. This is an industrial building and the likelihood of it being demolished and someone incurring the cost of that to develop residential property in East Griffin was highly unlikely. So we worked with Mr. Lucas's daughter, Gwen Lucas. We had several meetings, including with Commissioner Flowers Taylor in whose district the property lies. And worked with them because Mr. Lucas was moving his tire business from West End to Griffin, as I recall. Isn't that correct, Mr. Lucas? Alright, basically you were having to move because of gentrification and redevelopment around.
No, I, uh, I own the house three zero nine Mangum Road.
Okay.
And, and what I did was, uh, I kind of got tired of living together.
Okay.
And I liked records, so I moved. That's why I moved.
The building that was purchased is in, was in disrepair. The representations made in order to remove the building from the MVO was that the building would be brought up to codes. There would be an area for his tire resale business plus an area for there to be retail sales. And the rezoning, excuse me, which is, it's the equivalent of rezoning, removing it from the MVO was conditioned upon criteria related to site development and improvements in the structure. Those essentially have never been done. Now, and that was in twenty-two or twenty-three. And those conditions are still out there. The property is zoned as either C one, C or C two. I'm, I believe it's C two. The underlying zoning and those improvements have just never been done. Uh, we had a number of issues related to fire safety and we had a number of issues related to the inability to get the place just cleaned up. And tires just lying around out there without really having it office. So code enforcement has regularly been on this pretty much since that acquisition. Now, from the perspective of what happens, and I was not privy to the decision of the Board of Commissioners to seek the return of this property to the Mill Village Overlay. But the property is a problem. And the property will remain a problem whether Mr. Lucas is out there or not. And when, and, and understanding Mr. Lucas's health issues, the, it appeared that the best promise we had was for a purchaser to come in and pick up, if they wanted to do something similar, it's zoned for that because it's not an MVO, and proceed to get, uh, uh, the place cleaned back up, cleaned up and get the necessary stuff to where done, where the building's usable. And like, as I say, the reason it was pulled out of Mill Village Overlay is exactly for that reason. The Lucases presented a plan that represented to the county probably the only economically viable use or read, for redevelopment of that property. And it has just continued to sit. Uh, I wish that we could sit here and report that everything had been done that was required. And we can't. There are some improvements to the building over the past three years, but not much. I mean, from the standpoint of quality of construction, redoing things, getting it to where it's, it's presentable and can be used as either a retail or an industrial site, but we don't have that. Now, ultimately, it's up to the Commissioners to decide whether they want to move it back to Mill Village. Um, and if Mr. Lucas or a subsequent purchaser doesn't like it, then at that point they can challenge it. Or it may get to the Board of Commissioners and they decide, okay, what are we, like I walked through, what are we gonna do with this? So there, there's a significant history to this and regrettably, what we anticipate, the county anticipated being able to have done to that property has just simply never occurred.
Well, I concur with every bit you said because I was on this board when all of that was going on. And the things that should have been done to that building have not been done. Uh, and whether it's lack of money, lack of physical ability, they weren't done. Period.
Are there any other comments, um, from the members of the board?
Yes, I.
Yeah, go ahead, Doug.
I have a couple of things and I can, uh, uh, agree with Mr. Kimble on here that, uh, uh, we have a chance here to at least get something done with these buildings. Because let's face it, if it's gonna be, uh, go back to residential, first of all, you're gonna have to tear down those buildings. You're gonna have to put in curbing. You're gonna have to put in streets. You're gonna have to do all that, which is gonna be, uh, probably a whole lot more expensive uh, than right now for that area. Someone wants to come in and do that, is the way I see it. Uh, now, one thing that I was missing in the paperwork here is, is we were sent through email a timeline of, uh, where these folks were gonna do certain things. I have not seen that in the paperwork here.
I supplied the entire minutes from May of twenty twenty-three. Eva, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's not a specific timeline on here for all this to be done.
I, I believe, if I can supplement that a little.
This, this, that was in the email.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm going back before this.
Okay.
Okay.
I believe that when we first had to deal with code enforcement out there and Mr. Lucas was, his engineering work was being done by Paragon. Uh, I believe there was a representation of certain benchmarks. But that was not part of the original ordinance. That wasn't part of the rezoning. It came up in an effort to try to move it along and there were representations as to what could be done by what date. The benchmarks, whether formal or informal, were not met.
And what triggered this being here tonight was not any kind of missing a deadline on my part because they don't exist. What triggered it for me was, uh, Captain White, Rocky White, the Fire Marshal and Mr. Lucas's daughter coming to me saying he's in very bad health. He's seeking to try to sell the property. Knowing the BOC's intent or desire for this in the future, I said they need to know about that before another new owner who's not aware of the history starts going whole hog out here and starts doing something. So that's why we're at this point we're at right now.
Well, I guess, yes, my question.
We have more?
Uh, yeah.
Go ahead.
Not too.
But, and, and one more point. The property was put into MVO recognizing that it was an industrial site or had been an industrial site. But its underlying zoning is C two. And y'all know how much, what types of uses can fit within C two. And because there was the desire to try to give incentives to renovate and restore as affordable housing some of the Mill Villages, Mill Village housing. The concern was, okay, you can't put a nuclear reactor next to a residential zone now. Okay? And, um, or, or something that's gonna have noxious fumes or these other things. So the idea was to, as if somebody came up and wanted to do industrial development, we would, the county would look at that on a case by case basis for something to go there. Because we knew or expected exactly what Mr. Kendall said, that there is probably no use for that particular property absent an industrial use.
Well, that, my, my question would be, if it goes back to Mill Village, does it still retain the C two? Because I, I see no reason to, to change it to anything other than C two.
Well, the overlays are, as you know, more restrictive layers put on top of a normal zoning. And the Mill Village permitted uses makes it almost completely residential, not commercial.
Correct. And, and the MVO bill controls and supersedes what's in C two. But by pulling it out of that, we, the county had deflected. But by pulling it out of that, we, the county had the flexibility to put conditions on a particular use to, that would not be, uh, problematic.
So then if it goes back to Mill Village, then everything has to be destroyed, demolished to potentially build houses sometime, sometime maybe in the future.
And likely that's not going to occur, and then you have that shell of an industrial site just sitting as it has done. Since springs left us.
Yeah, that collects all sorts of stuff. I mean.
It is a problematic piece of property.
Right. And, you know, I mean, I can appreciate, uh, health issues, and that, that certainly would be a delay, and if there's a new owner. But I, I, I couldn't support going back to Mill Village with overlay with what's there now. Cause I, I would see no future use in my lifetime.
And remember, you have conditions on there governing the use.
Right.
You have conditions that's, that are on the, um, uh, action that they took to, uh, impose restrictions to where, you know, there's some additional protection that when you would not have had but for the effort to get it in MVO and then pull it out.
Well, and I, I would hate to see four hundred thousand dollars as a disincentive to anybody else. If you run into a delay, you may, that's not it very encouraging.
Thank you.
I know, I know where my mind is now.
Thank you.
Well, also too, uh, you know, you mentioned AKB from the time it was, uh, zoned or whatever that way, how many years it took for that.
Right.
Now, so far as the way I see it, you know, we need to get some commitment from these people here. But I'm all in favor of giving a little more time because, uh, folks, what we got out there now is what we gonna, we gonna be pushing up grass before that ever changes.
Mr. Humphries will be pushing up grass before that changes.
Mr. Ballard, yes.
So, uh, uh, I think if we have a chance to get something done out there, you know, it might take some commitments and, uh, by this date, by that date or whatever to do that, but, uh.
Then your action, Mr. Hartwick, would be to recommend that the property not be placed back under MVO.
Correct.
But I, and I, I'm gonna be direct on this, and Mr. Lucas, I don't mean to be insulting. But I think you've got to find an owner, you've got to find a new purchaser. So after the chair, my chair, uh, Madam Chair.
Is there, is, is okay, yes. Okay, the, Mr. Ballard, but you have just.
Well, I was, I was gonna point out just a couple of things too. I mean, I, I've been on, was on the board when all this went down the first time. And I was at the meeting when Ms. Flowers Taylor wanted further, um, you know, direction and, and sit down with them to go through it all and, and work with it. And, and granted, I, I would say that, um, things have, have not quite come about like we were hoping they would, would. Um, but on the other hand, it is better than what it was when it got started. And I guess I'm a little taken back that if we did not have any specific timeframe laid out to do this, that, that's a little bit of a concern to me, um, as far as Mr. Lucas's situation. I mean, I could, could see going and saying upon, you know, him, the property being sold and stuff and moving on, that we could consider going back. But to force that on him, and that was not a specific time, even though there've been, I, I know there's been issues, cause we've talked about it in here several times about the overrun of tires and going out making, um, you know, citations and stuff like that. But, um, but again, um, I'm not sure that it wasn't warrant considering a timeframe, a specific timeframe to maybe put something together to allow Mr. Lucas to rectify this. And then if he couldn't do it, um, then it could revert upon a sale of the property. And, and one other thing too, again, I, I'm, was here, you know, when Mr. Hostess went through his stuff before, and, um, and that was a tough one too. I was one that brought up whether, you know, the fact that this one had been taken out of the, uh, Mill Village overlay and his was still in. Um, which, you know, we, we had done it before, so that was, was a question. Um, but, but again, I guess with that and, and just some of the, the limitations um, that we do have with, uh, with what's out there, again, it, it does concern me that, um, kind of as Mr. Hartwick was saying, that if we don't try to allow something, or we're just gonna end up with a eyesore out there that's gonna continue on, um, if we don't try to, to make a few concessions to, to make some, you know, allow the improvements continue. So, anyway.
Thank you.
Well, I, I, this, um, business proposal that was in our emails, Mr. Kane, I think, prepared that. And there's this, on this last page, it's, uh, titled For Financial Benefit. Sorry, y'all don't have a copy. I, I don't wanna read the whole thing, but he lays out a plan in there. Um, first year, building, building A would be completed within one year. Then second paragraph in years, well, two and a half to three years, another phase, and then five to seven. So I don't know exactly how all that works with his different buildings. He does, he does elaborate on it. I don't know if that's something that would have to be, uh, presented to the Board of Commissioners is kinda tighten it up to make it more, I guess, firm. But I mean, he's, he's got a plan here now. I wasn't here back when this originally came up. But I mean, I, I agree with.
Mr. Kane, let's say you were out there tomorrow, what would be the nature of your business there?
Yes, good question.
Yes, please do. Step to the microphone.
Uh, well, I guess the first thing I'd like to do is get my guys out there and clean it up, all that overgrown grass and all that. Get that out of there, make it look presentable first. The right building where he has the tire machines and all that in right now, I'd like to get that going, get the plumbing started, get the sprinkler system as you want it done.
Right.
Get that going for the tires. I'm figuring eight to, eight months to a year, that should be done. Now, that could be sooner. I don't know how far Patriot by, is behind or anything like that. Then, well, if you're looking at, I don't know if y'all have a picture of it, but, uh.
Yeah, we got it.
Yeah.
If you look at that left side, like if you're facing it, the tires over here, the, right across from it, there's another building with that L shape right there. Would like to turn that, start construction on it. Revenue would get off tires. I wanna start construction on turning that into a truck and trailer. New truck and trailer parts in the south. Uh, the closest place right now is in Forest Park. You have to drive through Henry County traffic to get it. There's a ton of owner ops down this way, Pike County and all, so I think that would be a good thing. Then.
Mr. Kane, let me ask you a question, if you don't mind, Madam Chair. Are you familiar with the conditions that the board placed on Mr. Lucas's development and tied the zone, tied the C two zoning back to his site plan?
No, sir. I never got a li, I tried, uh, contacting several people. I never got a list of it. I, only thing I know for certain is the sprinkler system.
Okay. Cause he's limited to tire.
Retail tire sales.
Retail tire sales and.
Tire distribution.
Tire, tire distribution.
Oh, so you can't do part sales out of that left side over there?
Now, could, could somebody move in order to get the building approved or rehabbed to modify the condition to allow separate uses? The answer's yes.
Okay.
I mean, you would have to go through this process again. That's why I wanted to know. Eva, somebody just had the rezoning ordinance on the screen.
So that's why I was asking as well, which is why the, like or not, the Commissioners would have to see it because of that condition A up there. And your tires will be fine for a new owner, but you're also introducing, and they're fine uses. I'm not saying they're not, they're bad uses, but it's different from what is an A on that screen.
And, and they would be appropriate in a C two zone.
Okay.
But you would just have to have special permission for that to deviate from what's listed in A there.
Okay, okay. Yes, I didn't, Mr. Paul on the way there, I just seen, uh, a little bit of it. I think it was Thursday you sent me that stuff. I didn't, up until that point, I'd never seen none of this. Uh, and all I knew was about was the sprinkler system.
Right.
I'm not, like, my building over there is strictly truck and trailer maintenance, so, uh, I don't know anything about this legal stuff. But that was my, that's the plan. End up, maybe we get that changed.
It's not impossible, but it would need to be redone in black and white for all the world to see that this in the future is what is green to them.
Correct. Do, do you plan to buy the property from Mr. Lucas?
No, sir. Uh, I was at one point. I'd actually talked, went and talked to David, that I've seen him. Then there's issues coming up. And after talking with Mr. Lucas, we decided just partner up with it. He, his biggest thing, he can't handle the stress. He's gotta lay off the stress. And that's why I've come in. I'm a little younger, I can handle some more, and she can handle whatever I can't take, so.
Well, let me, let me, all right, again, I'm probably talking too much, but the time is of some essence here because the Commissioners initiated this, which is the appropriate way to take something back.
Yes.
To, but, um, uh, Madam Chair, I would recommend, this is just a suggestion, that you table it and give the, uh, give, um, Mr. Kane and Mr. Lucas until the October meeting to see if they can work out an agreement for his participation in the property to get it upgraded and be, and figure out what, what we need to do to allow you to do what you want to do that's not involving tires.
Yes, yes. Okay. Thank you.
Do you agree?
Yeah, I, yeah. I, I don't have a dog in the hunt anyway, but I knew the Commissioners were very keen on, had, I now got an email from Rocky White and the daughter about health worsening, there was no deadline to trigger this, so things would have been on, on his plan. But when you get a signal that might all of a sudden have a change in ownership, it's fair to the new owner to know that, look, there's some stuff going on here you need to know about, so.
Can, can I raise one on that? I kinda hate to bring these up here, but it, but again, um, as Mr. Hostess was mentioning earlier, do we have any concerns? Cause I do know we have had a number of other, um, folks involved over these years that sometimes things weren't documented quite like they should have been. Do we have any concerns about the mapping process and those things not being up?
We're not gonna discuss that, Bruce, tonight. Uh, Mr. Paul Hughes has a burden of proof to show us the error of our ways.
Okay.
And his lawyer gets paid more than I do to be able to establish that.
Well, is that something we might could look at, since we're tabling this, make sure we don't have another issue?
We might.
Okay.
All right.
Well, with that, I would make a motion to table this for tonight.
We have a motion and a second to table this item for the meeting in.
October.
October. All in. Do we need to further explain why we were tabling?
No, you're fine. We have discretion to table.
Specificity that would be challenged that we, okay. I have a motion to table this item for the next, uh, meeting in, in October. All in favor, raise your hand. I'll oppose. This item has been tabled. And you have the opportunity now to continue doing your due diligence and bring it back to us with these things in consideration and continue working with staff to get where you need to be.
But time is, uh, time is important. Okay.
Next item on the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair. Proposed text amendments to Appendix Four, zoning ordinance of Spalding County, Articles sixteen through nineteen pertaining to necessary corrections, clarifications, and improvements to uses and standards in certain portions of the zoning ordinance.
Mr. Allen.
So in our continuing saga, the zoning code changing this year, we're up to C three, PDD, VN, AAR, PRRRD, and O and I.
Sorry.
C three is your junkyard ordinance, for lack of a better term. Uh, PDD is a planned development district, VN is village node. AAR is not the retirement senior citizen thing, it's active adult residential. PRRRD is planned recreational, I forget what the other two Rs are, I'm tired.
Resort.
Resort, recreational. D, district, yes. O and I, of course, is office and institutional. Um, you have all the red lines in there. Most of these districts, the wheel was not reinvented. As always, with all of them, there is a lot of reorganization, putting in some necessary things that were not in there, reorganizing a lot of the development standards. Uh, just very briefly for C three, as I said, that's the junkyard ordinance. Probably the most major thing in there, and I'll defer to Mr. Galloway on the wording here, was, of course, junkyards are prin, principal permitted use in there. They're trying to make it to where if you have one that's not been active or sitting for the specified period of time exceeding that in the code, that it would not necessarily automatically resume being a junkyard with a new owner that had been sitting there for two, or two years or some, some specified amount of time. Uh, that wouldn't kick it off to a special exception, which I have noted in there. And there again, the wording on this may not be to Mr. Galloway's liking, I don't know, but, uh, we can work on that. Um, also establishing some more standards for truck repair facilities, recycling centers, those kind of problematic uses there, necessary but unsightly. Uh, so that's the major gist of C three. The, uh, AAR, VN, and what?
Question before you leave that one. So, um, just for me, like, under that new junkyards, does that take care of some, in this new wording, like the, uh, forklift cemetery up in Sunnyside?
It would help with it, yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Just wanna make sure that would eliminate that issue. Thank you.
It would kick it back to not an automatic resumption. It would be a hearing, yes. Um, let's see, what else we got? Next one is PDD. Uh, again, the wheel was not re, been reinvented here. Uh, we've made some necessary changes. I have outlined in there, nothing super substantial. Um, I know Mr. Ballard presented and afforded to y'all, he had some comments on some of these sections. We'll go over in a minute here. Uh, village node, much the same way. I did take out some of the, what I felt were inappropriate permitted uses in VN, such as personal care homes, things of that nature, that I don't think should be in a village node, commercial part of that. Also had in there some self-storage units. That was unfortunate. AAR, uh, which is essentially Sun City, and I don't know if we'll have another AAR, but nevertheless, if we do, uh, there's been some changes made there. Uh, certain things taken out, nothing major. Uh, some, uh, references to the new architectural ordinance we have. Instead of listing everything individually in here, clean up with that. PRRRD, like Cherokee Rose, and there again, Cherokee Rose, and I know we're the only ones on that.
It's the only one. It was, it was drafted for Cherokee Rose.
Right. So some changes there, um, did take into account some comments from Mr. Harris about setbacks of certain, like, shooting range areas off of there, some of the accessory uses there. Taking the setbacks larger. And then lastly, O and I was not reinvented much either. I did take out some of the, O and I, at this point, is only like fifteen parcels in the county. I was kinda surprised by that. So we don't have a lot of, unlike we do with C two, a lot of grandfathering stuff where you got a residence in C two, things of that nature. So I took a lot of the residential uses out of O and I to make it a true office institutional district. While it's still small, we don't have any parcels zoned out. So that was the main gist of the changes with O and I. Um, I know y'all have some questions, and also Mr. Ballard may wanna go through his suggested changes as well. I won't bore you with every single change.
All right.
We can question some of this on an individual basis.
Yes.
And do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Oh, yes.
Do we need to hear this?
Yes.
Public hearing individually, or can we open it as a general public hearing and then vote?
For all of them, yes, in general.
But we've had to vote separately?
Correct.
That's correct. That's, that's what we've done with the other districts.
Correct, right. I just want to make sure I was, I was wandering down the same.
I don't think you're going to have any speakers.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing? I have a motion to open the public hearing with a second. All in favor? All opposed? There's no opposition? We will proceed with the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak?
No matter speaker, nobody has signed up for the proposed text amendments.
Okay, Mr. Ballard, I'm going to recognize you right off the bat.
Wow. Um, well, no, I did have a, a few comments, but a lot of it was just, um, just.
Do you want to close the public hearing before you take comments?
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing? I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, not. Now let's go into discussion. Mr. Ballard, do you have any comments?
I did. I, I went ahead and it was this afternoon, unfortunately, but I did send those to, um, Mr. Allen and Mr. Galloway. Um, but a lot of it was just some wording that was left in there with question marks and things just to clean up that I don't think were supposed, intended to be in the final version. Uh, just wanted to make sure that that was covered. Uh, there were also a few areas, um, where there was a little bit of a discrepancy between, um, some of the footage and stuff noted, um, and item, for example, was on the, uh, C three zoning, um, for example, on page two oh two, it states all principal buildings shall be located at least fifty foot or fifty feet from the property line. But then when you go over to page two oh five and the development standards for C three, it notes that thirty-five feet from rear property line on the minimum rear yardage depth, so didn't seem that if it's going to be fifty minimum noted other places, it's like going to be fifty in there as well.
Good catch.
Okay, so just some, just some little things like that, I, again, I guess I kind of been.
I like when people actually read my stuff, so.
Little bit of a stickler with some of that stuff sometime. The, the other thing, um, under P D D, that kind of stood out was under the permitted use. Um, you have, uh, seventeen, this is on two eleven seventeen oh three, um, eight, and you have item one, and it goes, it's quite a long item, I saw, I'll read it all. But then when you go under B, under the following principal uses are permitted as special exceptions, it's the same thing. And it's also the same thing under C, the following accessories are permitted, and I, I think that.
Well, it says, the phrase is as a special exception, so there is that one small part that's different.
Right.
In other words, anything permitted is permitted here, but anything special exception over here is special.
And anything that's an accessory use.
Right.
Is an accessory use in the, uh, plan development.
Okay, well, that's, that's usually hasn't been the typical case when they were, were all be the same, so I was pointing that out to make sure. Um, um, another item, uh, was that under those first several there, when, when we were looking at the development standards and stuff, um, we actually have a separate section that talks about the materials and stuff to be used for the exterior work, but it doesn't have anything in the development standard little chart. But then we get on back to, I think, the third or fourth one, and we start including them. So again, it's just a matter of consistency. I, I didn't quite understand why we do it in some and don't do it in others.
Right.
And then, um, uh, uh, again, I guess the question, there were a couple of these, under the pavement width, we were changing it from twenty-four to twenty-eight. Um, and I was just.
Yeah, actually, it's, it's actually the same. You have on a typical road, you have twenty-four feet of asphalt.
Yes, sir.
By the time you do six inches of curb, foot and a half of gutter, it comes out in twenty-eight.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so that was basically just correcting the, the dimensions of the actual section, okay. All right, um, so, I mean, it was just generally just things like that, trying to make sure, I mean, it was just trying to make sure that when we get through with it, it's as clean and consistent as possible.
Next.
Uh, I have a couple of things. Uh, going to the village note setup, uh, according to the way I read this, is all the housing in Sun City also considered part of the village node?
It's A A R, active adult ri- district.
Okay, so the housing itself is not.
Now the commercial area across the street will be.
Property across Jordan Hill is the village node.
Okay, so the, I, I guess, maybe I misread it, but I, was there any press in some way or other talking that? But it's talking about the future, uh, construction in the village node across, uh, Jordan Hill, right? Okay. Uh, okay, the, one question I have is, uh, I've worked with the Sun City group that went out to get, uh, people to move into that village node once it's constructed, worked with McElroy on that. And we had a commitment for a golf cart maintenance place to come in out there. But I noticed that that is not added is to an acceptable thing under village node here. I would like to see that put back on there because we did have a commitment for that. Uh, and if, if I was wrong about the, the, uh, oh, yeah, you mentioned, uh, no personal care homes for the new expansion going back for that, uh, the back, back part of that hundred forty-seven acres back there? The original proposal by Minerva was that there was going to be an assisted living.
Right.
A, a personal care and also a full nursing home back there. That's part of their proposal.
So it is, and that is fine, and there is a different use mentioned as assisted living facility, and what a personal care home as defined is, is if these chairs are all houses and village node, you could each have run your own personal care home out of your house.
Oh, okay.
And avoid that.
Uh, yeah, yeah, uh, agreed.
Yeah.
Agreed with that, yes. Okay, uh, then the other question, if the inside Sun City didn't work, that, that was, that's fine, so I'm, I'm through.
Frank, do you have any comments?
C three, let's rethink, uh, taking hydro advertisement signs out of that.
Taking them out?
Mm-hmm, I mean, leave them back in.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Putting them in or taking them out?
Well, they were already in there, and they were struck.
Um, I think I may have moved.
What was that, Brian? C three?
Outdoor advertising sign use in C three.
Two oh four.
What did I do? Oh, I put them as an accessory use.
Special exception.
Yeah, special exception.
It shouldn't have to be a special exception. Not in C three. I'll be glad it's occupied privately later.
Advertise my space.
It's not a big deal.
We're about to go to sleep.
Anything else?
Bill?
I don't, I don't know how you get all of this that you have done, done, though, David.
It's a lot.
I have loads of free time.
Well, I, I wish I was as well organized as Bruce. I've got a lot of things that I went through, um, not all of them. And I don't know how you want me to do this. Do you want me to just, um, I don't have page numbers.
Can we tell you what?
So.
Tell you what, if you trust me, let me borrow it.
Yeah, I may, I may need to explain some of it, because they're kind of notes, but I mean, I'd be glad to do that at another time.
Yeah, I mean, you just give it to me tonight, and I can.
Yeah, and mainly a lot of it's just cleanup and trying to be consistent between where we ask for development review standards. I'm going, well, if we do that for one type, why don't we use the same standards for everybody? Rather than, on this one, you provide twenty items and another one, it's less items. And some other technical things that I've, I've run across too regarding like, um, how you get documents submitted, hopefully they're all digital and not paper, and trying to give some guidelines. Some of this is real weedy. And then some cleanup on floodplain language, and then too, um, from Georgia DOT, when we, when we, there's one section I'd have to look for, um, airports. DOT has something on their headlines, uh, headline called advanced air mobility, so these would be drones carrying packages. And right now, um, the you, you're allowed to take a package less than fifty pounds, anybody could, anyplace. So you might think of that as, well, pizza delivery, but probably wouldn't be cost effective, but for something like medical supplies or kind of like urgent care needs. But for being able to take loads greater than fifty pounds or even carry people, DOT is trying to get some things out and force the look ahead of where we might want to have those go or not go. Just some language cleanup. But I've got some references here, I'd be glad to go over with you. I went through best I could, limited time, and I wish I'd had a chance to email it all.
Speaking of G dot, you know, they're penalizing sanctuary cities.
I, I don't know about that.
G, G dot is penalizing sanctuary cities?
Yep, they withholding funds.
So I'll tell you what, uh, there is no rush on these, uh, unfortunately, the B S C would probably see these sections in twenty-seven, twenty-six, not twenty twenty-five. So if you'd like to have yours and like get yours, I'll.
I'll let you look at it and you give me guidance.
I'll bring it revised to the next meeting.
Yes, yeah, that, I mean, that would work.
Y'all want a motion to table the next meeting or whatever.
Can I, can I just ask one more thing? Again, this may or may not be pertinent, but it is in my, my notes there, I filled them up, but so again, like under dwelling townhouses, this is under, I think, the village node two, on two fifty.
Yeah, I saw that.
So we've got there, we say a minimum units per building of, of ten units. But then if you flip over to like, um, under flex units, we've got a maximum of ten. I can see a maximum, but I, I didn't see why if somebody wanted to have three-unit townhouse or four-unit townhouse, that that was going to be a real big issue. I don't think we want it to be too big.
Yeah, I need to flesh some of that out better. Like you said, there is missing some floor areas on there too.
Right, right, and just some of them go have the square footage and minimum square footage and others don't, and again, just trying to keep consistent.
No.
Okay.
Hopefully we do this once, so.
All right, well.
Then I would entertain at this point of time to, um, have a motion to table.
I'll make a motion to table.
I'll go to the next meeting.
And I have a motion and a second to table this item, these items uh, for the next meeting. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? And the motion passes.
Okay.
All right, last item on the agenda is the approval of, consider the approval of the minutes from the meeting on August twenty-sixth.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from the August twenty-sixth meeting with a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? There is no opposition, the item carries. Are there any comments or statements of privilege that the members of the board would like to speak to at this time?
Uh, just, uh, one comment. Uh, I appreciate the, uh, the better looking copies we got. Erica?
You're quite welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Glad to be in the seat.
Take that like usual.
Hey, anybody else with a, with a comment or something to bring to our attention or concern or celebration?
About a good joke. This young girl goes into church and she sees the priest going into confession. She hears this horse that says, what do you need, my child? And she says, are you taking this?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, this is all.
It's recorded.
Says, uh.
I'd want to do it after the meeting's adjourned.
Yeah.
God bless America, and, uh, church is out.
Okay.
Okey dokey. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Move.
I have a motion to adjourn, and I have a second. All in favor, raise your hand. We thank you very much, Commissioners. We thank you staff, we thank you attorney, we thank you manager, we thank you.